To order this committee of the whole meeting. First, I would like to read that members of the audience are welcome to ask questions and share insights on committee of the whole agenda items as they are being considered by the school board. Please raise your hand to be recognized by the board president. You are asked to come to the microphone so that everyone can hear your question or idea. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the agenda items being considered. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Can I get a roll call, Jessie?
Michelle Jefferson?
Here.
Joe Weiss?
Here.
Nathaniel Melton?
Here.
Meeting President Morrow? Present.
Marsha Scherz?
Here.
Paul Johnson?
Here.
Terry Osselson?
Here.
Okay, moving on to item C of the meeting opening. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with a change of adding item A of the closed session, discussion of policies 01, 2, 3, philosophy to the board, to open session for the sake of transparency.
So we have a motion for that. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion at this time for the change in the approval of the agenda?
I just think it's important, for the sake of the community, that we discuss that in open session. From my understanding from the emails, it's about protocol, ways we do business at the school board meetings. And I think it's in the best interest of the public so that they are able to see how we operate, how we do things. And also, it's concerning, as one board member mentioned when I raised concerns over email, that what's great about a closed-door meeting is nobody knows. And once it's set in closed-door session, nobody can talk. Because of that, I think it's very concerning that that's been moved to a closed-door session.
Any other discussion? Can I get a roll call vote on that, Jessie?
Michelle Jefferson?
Yes.
Joe Weiss?
Yes.
Nathaniel Melton?
Yes.
Meeting President Morrow?
No.
Marsha Scherz?
No.
Paul Johnson?
No.
Terry Osselson?
Yes.
Motion passes to change that item to a open session item.
May I ask where in the open session we're going to do that then?
Well, that wasn't in the motion, so I assume that would be the, we would move that to item?
K.
K.
K, okay.
So moving on to the, now that the agenda is approved, we'll move on to item two, discussion on action portion of the evening. So we have item A, considered WIA co-op for boys hockey. So can I get a motion in a second?
I make the motion that we do the WIA co-op for boys hockey.
I'll second it.
Just curious, is that just a sign word we agreed upon last? To confirm?
It's to agree to enter into a co-op with the Shell Lake School District for Boys Hockey for the 24-25 hockey season.
No discussion? Can we get a roll call vote on that, Jessie?
Terry Osselson?
Yes.
Paul Johnson?
Yes.
Marsha Scherz?
Yes.
Meeting President Morrow?
Yes.
Nathaniel Melton?
Yes.
Joe Weiss?
Yes.
Michelle Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item B, considered WIA co-op renewal for girls hockey. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion at this time? Can I get a vote on that? Roll call vote on that, Jessie?
Michelle Jefferson?
Yes.
Joe Weiss?
Yes.
Nathaniel Melton?
Yes.
Meeting President Morrow?
Yes.
Marsha Scherz?
Yes.
Paul Johnson?
Yes.
Terry Osselson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item three, presentations. And we have a letter A, which would be the student and staff record, community recognition. And first, we have Josh Fiesel with Ms. Carrie Bush. Carrie is our SMS Student Council advisor. She works hard to create leadership opportunities for our students and to be, and to find ways in which the student council can add to the positive culture of our building and support our community. She oversaw the Giving Tree to Benefit the Humane Society in December. The Humane Society was so appreciative of the efforts of our students. Thank you, Carrie, for providing these leadership opportunities for our students. We are fortunate to have you on our team. So again, Mr. Fiesel again with the SMS Student Council members. Sorry, let me get the list here for you. There we go. The SMS Student Council members organized a Giving Tree to Benefit the Humane Society in Spooner. They came up with the idea, organized the plan, and then they created the grade level incentives for donations. The Humane Society was so appreciative of their efforts. These students demonstrated positive leadership qualities to positively impact our community. We are fortunate to have such high-character students as part of SASD. Well done. We have Elizabeth Barrett, Millebeau Burke, Myella Birch, Tegan Colvey, Kenneth Downer, Heidi Hamblin, Grace Harris, Ella Way, Luel, Madison Manning, Grace Piskey, and William Walworth. Thank you all. Congratulations.
Good job.
Good job.
Smile for the picture. Practise.
Should we move the microphone?
Want me to get that mic out of there?
Maybe not.
There's a paper this week for this.
Okay. And then we have Dennis Scherz and Jeremy Ott.
One above that.
Oh, sorry. Wrong one. Moving back one to Kim Megan. Sorry about that. For Chris Burgamner. Sorry. Kim is in her first year of our SES School Health Aid. She comes to us with her 20 years of healthcare experience and has the expertise to handle all of the various issues encountered on a daily basis. As you can imagine, she is kept quite busy in our building, ranging from cleaning wounds and applying bandages to temperature checks to comforting ill children. She is extremely compassionate when it comes to taking care of children. She is also a wonderful communicator. She does not, she does a great job of proactively informing parents, staff, and also talking to children. She is a great teammate at SES, and we are fortunate to have such a wonderful person in that role. Thank you so much. Now, with Mr. Scherz and Mr. Ott, if you could please come forward. Thank you. Jeremy went the extra mile this year for Spooner High School. Jeremy saw a need and opportunity and welcomed the change. He is now splitting his position between the high school and the alternative school. He has worked hard to make transition seamless while also taking on additional class at Spooner High School to cover a leave of absence. Jeremy is a dedicated educator, and this is evident in the work he has done this year. Thank you, Jeremy, for the extra effort in always keeping students first. Okay. Thank you, everyone, very much. Okay, moving on to item B, the referendum project update. And there is no update this month for that at this time. And then we've been moving on to item C, discuss distribution of free COVID testing kits to families. And we would have district nurse, Ms. Leah Foley, if you could come up, please.
Jessie, is this? Oh, I just need to, sorry. Here we go. Good evening. Just wanted to quick do a presentation about some new COVID tests that are available federally and available to any school that requests them. We, these tests have typically, right now, we have tests that we can do at the school level requiring parental consent. It's done in my office, and it's registered through an online website that collects data. These tests are to be distributed to families and students at their request, and they are free for all students. I would just need to order stock as needed. So I'm just here to propose that we have these tests available. It's very similar to the tests that the library has. I won't be sending them out in offices, but I will just have them ready in case there was a situation where a student wanted to be tested or families wanted extra tests at home. This would provide less exposure for schools if students had more availability at home. It's equity for students and families. This is the most common way that we identify COVID in our community is an at-home test. Gold standard is still the PCR test, but this type of testing does identify a lot of cases. So just asking for approval and proposing that we have these tests available. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions at this time for Ms. Foley?
No.
We can, no.
If you have a question, can you come to the?
Meekan? Oh, I'm sorry. This is for the public task.
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Brian Boyd. I have a question about, you said, an online website that collects data. That sounds a bit concerning. Just curious if you could explain a little bit more about that?
Currently, I have tests available, and through our DPI education, the District of Public Instruction, is that the correct for the? So we have tests available that I administer per parental consent. I will never administer unless a parent consents, they register on this website, I give them instructions, they fill it out, and upon their approval and consent, I administer the test. It's not a PCR test. It is a rapid test, and then I upload the results so that the families can have access to that information. So if they are positive or negative, they can take that, and they can have an official way to record that they are, the result of their test. But it is something that is consented. It's nothing that I do unless a parent wants me to do that for their student.
Yeah, so follow-up to that is, the basis, you're saying that you upload, they upload the results to that website, and then who has access to that, though? Is it, I mean, what type of personal information is on that? Or PHI, I should say?
It's anything that the family uploads themselves.
Okay.
I don't upload any family data. I don't upload any student data. I go into the data that the individual, the parent, the adult has uploaded already, so they do not have to put anything on that website unless, and they have to consent to, it's COVID Connect is the program, and it's state federally based.
So if you do the test, they don't have to put anything out there, though, on the test?
They don't have, what do you mean by anything?
Put anything, the results don't have to be put on there if the parents don't want them to be?
The consent says that they want me to upload the data, the information of the test. And I only, I only test if they request that I test. And it's per our Safe at School Plan. It is widely known that I have these tests available for anyone who requests it.
Right, but to follow along, you said that they're, they don't have to upload anything? They take the test, it says positive or negative, and it's just their opportunity to upload it if they want to? Is that the idea?
I have to upload it per their agreement, and they consent by, any, any website that you go to, you consent by entering the information. I don't enter any, any personal information.
Gotcha.
I only enter the result of the test, and that is part of what they consent to when they put that information in.
Okay.
But that's separate from what you're talking about?
Totally separate. I just want, that's currently our Safe at School Plan, and that has been for the last, before I was here as a nurse.
Gotcha. Again, my, just my concern was an online website where, you know, it collects data. So that's, that was my concern.
Sure. Good question. Yes, Paul?
Can a person take the test anonymously if I'd like? If you just want to give me five tests because I'd like to have my family tested, can I take those five tests home and anonymously test my family, and is that okay with you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions at all?
Just a quick one. How are parents going to be notified that this is available to them?
Sure. I have, I have a health service website on the SASD webpage that I update when I don't have all the kids in my office and as soon as I can to get updated information. But once we have these tests available, I will add that information to the health services webpage. And then I, you know, on a case-by-case basis, if I find somebody saying that they have COVID or they think they have COVID, then I might offer it to their parents from my office.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your questions. So there's, if there's any more further questions, we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item D, discuss open enrollment seats for 24-25 and People Services Director, Patrick Vavro.
Yeah, I'm Patrick Vavro. It's nice to, to meet all of you guys finally. I've, the groomers. All good. All good. Don't worry. I just need to find out where my slideshow is here. I apologize. Thank you. Thank you, Hugh. Yeah, so I may obviously talk about open enrollment numbers for next year, and the state requires the Board of Education to announce and approve open enrollment numbers annually at the July board meeting, excuse me, January board meeting for the upcoming school year. What we look at is, we look at the regular education students and special education students at all grade levels. And then we project open enrollment based on our current enrollment. In years past, what we've done here is, we've always just went with five seats per grade level, and this has been pretty successful for us. I don't see any need to change. So if we went with that five-seat route, you'd have 30, obviously, seats at the elementary school, 20 at the middle school, and then 20 at the high school level. So right now, the projected number in class sections, now, this is the bare minimum. We would have three sections in grades four, K, K, second and fourth, four sections in first and third. At the middle school, we'd have three sections in grades five, six, and seven, and four sections in eight. Obviously, right now, our sections, we have more sections than some of those, and we would like to continue that trend if possible because that lower the student teacher ratio is obviously very beneficial. So special education purposes, the state recommends a maximum caseload of 26. Now, that's a little bit different than regular ed. When I say 26, regular education students, that's just 26 students. A regular education student has a caseload, a matrix that is a one. A special education student, because there's sometimes additional services that go on with that student, the caseload may be a little bit higher. So a student, maybe who has just a need in speech pathology, may have a caseload number of 1.4, 1.6. A student who maybe has more intensive needs, maybe a student with an intellectual disability that gets OT, PT services, speech language services, may have a caseload number of closer to 3.5, 3.6. So when you see 26, that doesn't mean 26 students, just so you're aware. So 23.4 is what we would consider a full caseload here because we have inclusion as our dominant setting. We try to include kids in the regular education classroom setting as much as possible, and because of this, we have that little bit lower number. 26 is the number when inclusion is not the dominant setting. So we would ask that the board, you know, adopt the recommended state maximum levels for open enrollment purposes, and then we reserve kind of two seats with an estimation of 2.6, that matrix that I talked about. So 5.2 seats per building. So 5.2 at the elementary school, 5.2 at the middle school, and 5.2 at the high school. Any questions on that so far? I kind of throw a lot of information at you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is John Hedland. I got a question for this. You was talking about caseload numbers.
Yes.
Does that correlate to the amount of money that comes into our district for that student? Or is there something else that that's tied to?
That doesn't correlate with the amount of money that's coming into the district. That's purely based on, yeah, different factors, but this is just calculating the caseloads for, for what teachers.
So it's how many teachers we need?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we look at. Yep.
All right. Thanks.
Mr. Vavro, however.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hedland's question, do open enrollment requests, are they evaluated to determine whether the SASD would be able to provide the services that a child who receives special education support, that the district would be able to provide those?
Yes, most definitely. And I guess I'll, I'll touch on that as we go through some of these recommendations that, so if I don't touch on that, please let me know. I'll come back to it. But current preferences, obviously, are given in the, for current open enrollment students. Right now, as a special education, we have five open enrollment students who have special education needs. That's our first preference is to get those kids, obviously, next year. We also want, then look at the current number of open enrollment students with special needs. Siblings of current open enrollment students with special needs. And then last, that the order that the open enrollment applications are received, our first come, first served basis at that until they're filled up. The acceptance of students with disabilities that open enroll is based on, obviously, one, the special education space available. So as long as we have special education space available, we want those students, obviously, to come into our district because it does provide more funding and things of that nature. Most definitely. Yep. Class base available. So not only do we need, because we use an inclusive model, we want class base available in addition to the special education space available, and like Dr. Assen alluded to, we need to make sure that we have the services here that will help those students and those needs. If we don't have those services, and we would have to pay more money to provide those services, sometimes those students might not be accepted as open enrolled because we would have to pay additional, for additional services. Okay? So looking at the special education seats, right now, based on the number of students that are projected to be at the elementary school that have special needs, we don't have any open seats available. Okay? At Spooner Middle School, we have three full-time teachers, and we have 8.9 seats available. Now, depending on how the matrix and the students that were to want to open enroll, that could be anywhere from three to six kids, depending on, on the matrix and the level of the students. High school level, we have 10.8 seats available for teachers, and that could be anywhere from, like I talked about, three, four to seven, eight students, depending on, on the nature of, of their disabilities. So, yeah, if there's any additional questions, I'd be more than happy to ask. Otherwise, I would say, let's plan on it. Go ahead.
Just have a question about the sections, and I don't know if this is for you or a middle school principal, perhaps. I'm looking at the projected number of sections at the middle school based on the chart that we have.
Yeah.
And you mentioned as well that there are three sections in grades five, six, and seven, and then four sections in grade eight.
Yep.
Can you give me any more information on that?
Well, and we, I calculated that just based on the bare minimum right now, and I think at the middle school, I think we were looking at 22 per grade level. I think, is that 25? Okay. And then we looked at the number of, of students that were at that grade level, and then based on that, we came up with the calculation of how many teachers we would need to adequately cover that at each of those grades. And that's the bare minimum. Like I said, we'd like to have more, just because in that case, we're having that higher student-to-teacher ratio.
Also, as of today, we have four teachers in that grade level, so our capacity would be roughly 100 students. So we could support that amount of open enrollment in, given the data as it's presented today.
Right.
Could change as time goes on, but as of tonight, real time, four teachers, around 25 kids, we could support roughly 100 students in our eighth-grade class.
Question. The charts I have in front of me have purple and blue boxes. What, what are you doing theyating with those colors? What does that mean?
I don't have any idea, to be honest with you. Yeah. You know, I think initially, what it was, is based on last year, and I, I could be wrong on that, but I, I believe it was, Mr. Burgamner and I went through at the elementary school, and we based on the Sage numbers. And with the Sage numbers, it was 18 was the target selection size. Last year, those target selection sizes were a little bit different, and we don't know where those numbers came from when we, when we looked at it. But this year, we, we based the target selection size on, on the Sage numbers at the elementary school level.
We'll confirm that and follow up with you, Mr. West.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions at all?
You've got an open enrollment suggestion of five students per grade level, and we're just talking about potentially 700 students in eighth grade with, with those numbers coming in or out. My question is, how does that, how does a student open enrolling from one district to another affect each district's finances? As I, my understanding is that the state gives, the home district still gives, still gets some money from that student when they open and roll to another. Does that affect the student, the school that that student goes to in an adverse way?
Dr. Assen, you could probably hit on this better than I can, and I'll let you, if you have comfort.
Be glad to field that one.
Yeah.
So the home district of a student counts that student for the purpose of their levy. When they open and roll to another district, there is a flat rate that the state sets, and it's dependent on the grade of the student. So the home district would keep any excess that was beyond what that state figure was for the student, even if they're not providing services to that child.
All right. So it could have a positive or negative effect, depending on what their, that district's numbers are.
Right.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Sorry.
Obviously, then, obviously, the next step will be hopefully improve the open enrollment numbers for the regular education board meeting as presented. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have consensus to move this to the regular meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item E, update on our current out-of-school programming and community education. Mr. Barnett? Thank you.
There we go. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, speaking to you. I have learned so much about our district in the last six months as I began my work in our community ed program. And just a little bit about what our community ed program is. We've really tried to think about us as the mighty and proud powers that we are. And as I've spent time
So the home district would keep any excess that was beyond what that state figure was for the student, even if they're not providing services to that child.
All right. So it could have a positive or negative effect depending on what that district's numbers are.
Right.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Sorry.
Obviously, then, obviously, the next step will be hopefully improve the open enrollment numbers for the regular education board meeting as presented. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have consensus to move this to the regular meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item E, update on our current out-of-school programming in community education. Mr. Barnett, thank you.
There we go. It's a pleasure to be here tonight speaking to you. I have learned so much about our district in the last six months as I began my work in our community ed program. And just a little bit about what our community ed program is. We've really tried to think about us as the mighty and proud roles that we are. And as I've spent time working with our staffs and our buildings, figuring out what terminology we can infuse into this program. So what cars are on the rails in our out-of-school time? And by the way, that is the new designation from the Wisconsin DPI about what the program is called. In the old days, that was called the after-school and before-school program. It's now referred to as the OST, out-of-school time program. We have two clubs here in Spooner, the High Five Clubs at the elementary school and the Espresso Clubs at Spooner Middle School. What else we do is summer school enrichment in June and boost up in August. And finally, community education. And this is the one that we're going to talk a little bit about tonight, and how do we reinvent it and bring it back in the post-COVID existence? So we've created two different kinds of events. One is called the one-way ticket. Those are one-day events that happen. We have one scheduled for not too long from now. And then a monthly pass. Those are the classes that we hope to bring onboard soon as part of our community ed to reach out to more than just our school-aged children. The High Five Clubs at Spooner Elementary right now, there are 102 registered student participants, 12 Spooner Area School District employees that are leading clubs, three community volunteers, two paid community leaders, two high school student aides. And right now, our programming at Spooner Elementary is based on grades. So our first graders are kept together, our second graders are together, third and fourth, so on. At the Espresso Express Clubs at Spooner Middle School, there are 130 registered student participants, there are 17 student, I'm sorry, Spooner Area School District employees that are leading clubs, there are community volunteers leading clubs, there are paid community leaders that are leading clubs, there are high school student aides. And our programming at the middle school is all about student interest. This is a huge component of the out-of-school time program, the student voice and choice, for them to be able to decide what clubs they want to be part of. And this is something that in the future, we hope to bring to Spooner Elementary as well, so that students can really experience that, what do I want to do, what do I need to become all I can be? Community education in the Spooner schools, we have the one-way ticket. And I'm excited to announce that our first event is going to actually go, The Lion King. We are going to the Orpheum Theater in Minneapolis on April 27th to watch the second-to-last performance of The Lion King. Good seats. Through the resources of the district, through the Jura funds from the lawsuit, we were able to secure funds that can be used to help supplement the cost. Some of the very people we need to reach to come to these programs are the ones that are going to struggle to pay that $92 to go. So if we can make it be about the ticket and help supplement the cost of transportation, we're going to do better to get more students and their families to be able to attend. So the cost of that was brought down by additional funds. We're also hoping to bring DNR-sponsored training programs to teach the Spooner community. And what we mean by that is we're looking for opportunities to bring in people to teach community members to lead hunter safety, to lead boating safety and aquatic safety, and off-road vehicle safety, so that then we can offer those classes in the community to our students and beyond. And then also, we're looking to bring in classes in our monthly pass program in artistic welding, cooking, financing, parenting, and other interest areas. It's been a little tricky to get all these things off the ground this quickly, and we hope that over the course of the next four months, some of those experiences will indeed happen. COVID caused us to really have to rethink how we can bring these things back. There's an interest, but that interest has to be self-sufficient. So these courses have to pay for themselves, which makes it a little trickier. But we're hopeful that some of these will fly in the next few months. And then to keep with that train motif, what's making the student, what am I working on these days as part of the community ed program? It's a busy time. It's a high-stakes time. On January 26th, our application for the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction NIDA-MLW Community Education Learning Center grant is due. I was counting it up as I left my office today. So far, I've written about 60,000 words, and I've got a little bit more to go, but very excited about what we might be doing with that. That grant is $115,000 per year for five years, making it a total of $575,000. We hope as we're doing this to rebrand our High Five program, keeping with that train theme to the mighty engines. And that term came from Mr. Berghanner, and we're kind of excited about that. There's an old Spooner logo that has the train guy going like this, and we thought that might be just a little scary for the kids, but we're thinking about what that logo could look like. We're also through a lot of collaborative discussions with the teachers at Spooner Elementary School, come to the realization that while we need to focus on the academic skills that our students need in reading and math, we also really need to focus on their social and emotional well-being. So our grant is being written in such a way to really address what resources we can provide through that mighty engines program to help them grow. There's also an increased prominence of student voice and choice. Again, that's huge in this grant process. And an overarching goal to purchase a third van for student transportation. We are handicapped right now by not being able to provide transportation to all the students that request it. Part of it is because of the large size of our geographic area, 550 square miles, vans going out to Big McKenzie out that way, and also going to Sirona out that way, and Trigo don't exactly work in a timely manner. So we're hoping that by maybe getting a third van, we can alleviate some of that issue. We're also hoping to increase student participation by adding pre-K and expanding our kindergarten program to four days a week from the two that it's at currently. We also hope that we can integrate on a very strong level, the principal, counselor, teaching staff, to help us make sure that this program is really meeting the needs of the students and integrating successfully the out-of-school time program with the day school time program. We've also spent a lot of time trying to align all the procedures in our out-of-school time program between the middle school and the high school, I'm sorry, the elementary school, where right now, they kind of are operating as two separate sites. We want to make sure, especially for the sake of our parents that have students in both, our policies are similar at both sites. We're also working on creating a student advisory board to help us determine what those voice and choice and what those needs are at both sites. We're also beginning to build the schedule for community ed this spring and seeking additional sources of funding. That is one of the huge parts of this out-of-school time program is, what is the sustainability in the, hopefully unlikely event that we are not successful in getting the grant? What would we do to keep this program going? And that's something that through the work of the advisory board, the community advisory board that's attached to the out-of-school time program, we would hope that we could find ways to fund that so that that program would continue. We've also been working on strengthening the community advisory board by adding more members to it. We've added four members this year, and that's exciting. And also, our new baby club, the Elevated Rails, which is an opportunity in the long haul to hopefully attract our retired educators that have a wealth of experience into the schools again. How can they assist us with the good work we're doing? Maybe that's coming in to read to students. Maybe that's just being somebody that could be part of our out-of-school time program to help students with whatever those needs are, whether that's a one-on-one need or supervising the playground. That Gaga Pit is a dangerous place. If you don't know anything about Gaga Ball, it's a new game to take the place of Dodgeball, much safer, so they say. But the beauty of it is, the students sometimes create rules that if the sun is shining and it's a Wednesday, I can do this, but if it's Tuesday and cloudy, I can't. So having people out on the playground is a big deal. And also building relationships in the community. I'm a member of the Spooner Chamber of Commerce and spend a lot of time talking about the programs that we're hoping to get off the ground and make sure that our community is aware of what those are. So we're excited about all that. And we are, here are three logos right now. Hopefully soon, we'll have a new one to go with newly re-minted SES Mighty Engines. But our goal is to help keep students on track, get onboard. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any questions at this time?
I just got, I got one. Pat, you mentioned the Lion King trip. Could you explain the funding again for that? I'm curious, because in our vouchers this month, we have $3,280 for tickets for the adult education trip.
Yes, you do.
Where does that come from?
So unfortunately, the way all of these reservations work is that we have to take a leap of faith when we secure the reservation for the tickets. That reservation was due right before winter break. And so what we did is we know that those reservations are continuing to come in. So the district needed to put some money forth to make sure that we didn't lose those tickets. So that is not the transportation that I was talking about. The reservation for the bus, the school bus that they were taking to that trip is $800, half of which is being funded by the district, the other half is being funded by the participants that are going.
Any other questions? No, no questions at this time? Okay, we received that information and placed it on file. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item F, discuss overnight storage request. Dr. Aslan?
Overnight storage request in front of your facilities use is from the Northwest Lakes Conference, and they're looking to use the facility as they have annually for some time on June 21st. And as you'll see on the document and board docs, they're requesting to use a variety of spaces here at Spooner High School, also requesting assistance with technology.
Okay. Any questions at this time regarding that request?
None here.
Okay. Do we have consensus to move that to the regular meeting as well?
Yes.
Yes? Item G, discuss storage area network replacement project. Mr. Miller?
Okay, so the information you have in your pack that was provided to is for a tech office project I'm looking to get approval to move ahead with, and that is for what is called a storage area network, or SAN, which is a piece of equipment we use that provides storage that our virtual servers, along with the data that programs and our students and staff have used and ties it together. The existing SAN we have is currently five years old and will become what is considered end of life, meaning no longer support available for it later this summer. So we've been planning for replacement of this. And so what you see there is our plan is to acquire a new SAN to replace late spring or early summer of this coming year. And so I'm just looking to get approval to move ahead with that. If we did, we would put places in, or the plan more, put the plan in place to move forward to install it, and then plan to recycle and repurpose the old SAN. It's just a central piece of network equipment that every five or six years or so comes up, needs to be replaced, and we're at that point in the lifecycle of this device.
Any questions?
We've already budgeted.
Yeah.
Just so the community knows.
I'm just speaking as the cost of the item looks for approval to move.
Thank you, Hugh.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I was just going to say, is there the only, only the one company or business that would support this, or are there other?
Well, it's an HP product.
Yep.
But the company that I'm working with is one we work with for other products that supports it. So there are other vendors that'll support it, but this is a vendor that we have a relationship with and is also on the DOA state contract, providing the pricing. So we are getting the best pricing along with the company that'll provide us the support that's familiar with our environment when we need to take it to a higher level for support, if that makes sense.
Yeah. No, I, we probably have to use the DOA contract, too.
Yep.
Any other questions? No? Okay.
No.
Do we have consensus to move this to the regular meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item H, the 30, 60, 90-day planning. Everyone had a chance to review that information? Yes? You just received that information and placed it on file? And then moving on to item I, the financial update. Dr. Aslan?
Here's a financial update for the month of November 2023. The district had income of $85,073.83. It came largely from Department of Public Instruction food service claims and also through some interest earned. Expenditures were $1,347,322.79. Cash on hand at the end of November was $823,461.06. To contrast that on-hand figure with a year previous, November 2022, cash on hand was
Okay. Any questions at this time on the financial updates? If none, we receive that. No? Okay. We receive that information and place it on file. Moving on to item J, the approval of the vouchers. Do we have consensus to move that to the regular meeting as part of the consent agenda? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then we're moving on to, which is the new item now, item K, which is discussion of a policy 0123 philosophy of the board. And everyone has a copy of that?
Yes.
Yes? All right. I can read this policy for the public, if you would like. A 0123 philosophy of the board, a board of education is a legal entity for providing a system of public education within a geographic area of the state of Wisconsin. The system was created by and is governed by state statutes. Members of the board are chosen by citizens to represent them and the state in the governance of the local schools. The board has the dual responsibilities for implementing statutory requirements pertaining to public education and for meeting the desires of residents. While the board has an obligation to determine, assess citizen desires, it is understood that when the voters elect delegates to represent them in the conduct of specified educational programs, they, at the same time, are endowed with the authority to exercise their best judgment in determining policies and making decisions and approving procedures for carrying out the responsibility. The board declares, therefore, reaffirms its intent to A, maintain two-way communications with citizens of the district. The board shall keep them informed of school district operations. B, establish policies and make decisions on those policies. And C, act as a truly representative body for citizens in all matters related to programs and operations. The board recognizes that ultimate responsibility for public education rests with the state, but the board of education has been assigned specific authority through statute, and the board shall not relinquish or fail to exercise that authority. So, that being said, this is a discussion requested by me, and I just thought it was very important that this be put on the agenda. For, we have some upcoming important agenda items coming up with our new strategic plan. I thought it was just that we have a good revisit as a board, as our philosophy as a whole, that it's important that we represent and all of the community. There's 800-plus households in this community, so we're just making sure that we conduct our board business in a respectful manner, and that moving forward, that we can come come as a unified, or at least an undivided board in light of reviewing last week's, I'm sorry, the meeting, our last board meeting. I just thought it was important that we just revisit that it's business meetings, it's a board business meeting, and that we need to be respectful of people's opinions and the difference of opinions, but it is board business that is conducted in a board meeting. So I thought it was important that we just revisit and have a discussion about this policy. Any other discussion?
I'm just curious if you thought that that wasn't happening because me, I think we had a very robust conversation. I think it was a good conversation. I just was wondering if you thought that we were not doing that?
I personally, yes, didn't think that we were not. I think that there was some tactics of bullying and threatening and feeling very uncomfortable. I didn't feel safe leaving the meeting. I don't know about anybody else, but I'm not gonna be threatened into making a decision that I think is best for what I feel for the community and my family and the people that I represent as the community as a whole, which is eight-hundred households that was not here. It wasn't eight-hundred households here, it was a portion of the community. So that's my opinion, Megan Benson-Warrell.
So specifically, when we talk about bullying or threatening, I'm just wondering specifically, specifically, where was there bullying? And specifically, where was there any threatening?
When people threatened to open a charter school, that was threatening, that if we, as certain members made a decision, it was threatening that you, that a charter school would be opened.
No, I think you misunderstood. So the misunderstanding comes is this, when you have a large community, and it wasn't everybody here, everybody recognizes that. What you need to recognize is that when we go a certain route in our community, that there is always consequences, good and bad, to everything we do. And I think it was well said at the Cal meeting last month by Andrew, that he's asked all the time to start a private school. We know in the past we have a private school already in town that is a voucher school. And when you begin to move in a different direction that a community is not happy with, and I think some of them would say they didn't feel heard, they didn't feel like there was... What happens is, that's not a threat, that's a reality what happens. We already see that happening. So let's take something simple like hockey. In the past, we've had people go to Rice Lake to play hockey. We've had people go to
You were.
Other places to open and roll. And in that process, we have a whole history of losing students to different things. So to mention that would be, I don't, that's not in any way threatening, it's the saying that we want to protect the school, that's what I think I heard. Everybody wants to protect the school, we want to see the school make it and thrive as a community. If we're not careful, we can't afford to lose any more students. And so it's how do you come as collectively as a majority? So that's not a threat, that is just, I'm sorry you felt that way, but I don't think there was any threats made, as many people, we were all here, there's people here in the community that were here, and there was no threats. And I think it's important that we're careful, and that's why I'm glad we did this in open session, because I didn't want to go in closed session and be accused of being a person that was one of those people threatening bullying, because I did not threaten, I did not bully. I'm saying I'm one of the persons that mentioned the charter school, so I'm assuming that was me.
I feel that, you know, I respect your opinion and thank you for sharing that. Was there any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to add, I got the impression that when the public was asking questions, they weren't supposed to ask us questions on the board, we weren't allowed to respond. I kind of disagree with that, especially when that many people showed an interest to be here for a certain subject, and they're asking questions. I don't feel like it's a bad thing to respond to them. Give them some time, you know, and they needed some answers, and if we happen to have answers up here, I think it's imperative that we give those. And again, that goes along with transparency of the board and how people can see how we operate and how we all think about a subject, because obviously we get elected and people need to know who they're electing.
Correct, but it is also, we're conducting business of the board at the meeting, so there is a structure to conducting that business.
I understand that, but I think part of that structure should include some interaction if it's requested from the public.
Well, that would be some policy changes.
At Robert's Rules of Order, where they have public comment, in the meeting of the board is the time for the board to discuss the business. Questions are able to be asked at the committee of the whole, which is the purpose of having a committee of the whole structure, so that people can ask those questions during the committee meeting.
You're correct on that. And then when a board member tries to help the community and that's getting trumped down, you frustrate a lot of people by doing that. When you're trying to help, a lot of people have never been to a school board meeting maybe in their lives, you're trying to help them understand that and you weren't given that there was the board or whoever was trying to stop that, that's not, that's not good for that. There's always room, even with Robert's Rules of Orders, there is room to stretch a little bit, we're a small community. And the best way is to be transparent, take the time, let people talk, answer it unless it's something outrageous, disrespectful. You should try to accommodate that, because then everybody has a voice, they feel heard, and you have a stronger community because of it.
And we have a time during the meeting for them to voice their opinions and ask questions. There's times during those meetings that's structured.
There is, but you had people, so an example of that is, now you see we don't have no... So you have a strong meeting, and now we take all policies off the agenda. Last, and then we circumvent, for example, the last Cal meeting on policy about public expression of board members, that we unanimously said we want to move that to the next Cal meeting, and it's not even on this agenda. I don't know how you circumvent the consensus of a board and then just wipe off all policies for the sake of what? We don't want people from the community here? That's concerning to me. This revision of public expression of board members has now been on a docket, this will be the third month that we have not addressed this particular piece of policy that we agreed that we would do that on this meeting. And I do understand they're gonna have Wasby and Neola here to give representatives. At the end of the day, the school board is still the one that implements or votes on or adapts suggested policies. So I appreciate that we're gonna have those representatives here, but we did unanimously send that this would be talked about at this meeting tonight, and that didn't happen. If you want to talk about Robert's Rules of Orders, I kind of feel like then if you're gonna use the same standard, that you violated that standard.
Correct.
I feel the one thing that we should need to do to improve would be to simply be recognized by the chair before we speak. I think we put a chair, a person in charge to run the meeting, and as a board member, I would hope that we can get to a point where people be respected, respect each other on the board enough to say, you at least would be recognized to speak, because what's happening is everyone's going over the top of one another or interrupting before people get completed with their sentence. And it's not really good for open discussion to have the going back and forth. The other thing would be is perhaps we should limit the number of times a person could say something. And the only reason I'm saying that is because it gets redundant. At some point, we have to, there was a vote called last time and people didn't want to take the vote. They just were looking for a reason not to take the vote. Now, once the vote has been called, we need to take the vote and move on to the next agenda item. This is how we operate. Be respectful, you've been heard, we get to take the vote, when it's done, we move on to the next agenda item, and you don't look backwards. We keep moving on because we have a school district to run. I can appreciate that, Paul, but limiting speech and debate is not ever in our history been a good thing. I agree with you, but what I said is, once it's been called, that's when we move it along, because what's happening right now is people are just jumping in and going, and at least be respectful enough to raise your hand, be recognized so that you can speak. That's all I'm asking for. A little civility here, when we have a board, so when people look in from the outside, they look at Spooner School District and say, the board at least operates effectively, they hear everybody before they vote, and then we move on. And I don't think that chaos in a meeting is something, that is something we should be proud of, and I felt it was a chaos last time. People were over-talking and interrupting. We've had people from the crowd that were involved. It's our meeting, once the public has spoken, we have heard what they had to say, it's time for us to move on to our work now. And I agree with you. Every time we vote, you're gonna upset somebody, because everybody's not gonna agree with you, so just by voting, you're gonna upset somebody, but once the vote is called, we all vote and move on.
Again, no pause, only the Robert's Rules of Orders, I don't think anything was violated that night. Stretched a little bit, I have to imagine our forefathers when they were coming up with the Bill of Rights and doing all that stuff, that they had robust conversations, stretching that rules of order as well, but they came up with a very good thing because they had debate. They took the time. Most of the times our meetings are half hour, but when there's an issue, our history here at Spooner Schools, the Spooner School District, the history since I've been on the board, the more time you give people to speak, as long as they're being respectful and as long as they're trying, when they don't understand how meetings run, so help them, that's our job, to help them understand. When you try to prevent that, you only make it look bad, that looks bad on the board. A debate is a part of that, and you need to make sure that we exhaust all that debate. And Paul, you have done that in the past. You will exhaust things to the end, just as I will. So I think that's important. It's important so that you get to the right decisions at the right time, thinking about the right things, and that's good, that's good for, that's good for making decisions, it's good for the process. And history says here at the schools, at least my experience, is when you try to shorten that, circumvent it, do play games, hide things, put stuff in closed-door sessions, try to shut people up, say things to the, that usually is a recipe for disaster, whether you agree or disagree with whatever's being spoken on.
Is there any other?
Michelle's raising her hand.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Michelle, sorry. That's okay.
So my only concern with calling it to vote is what if somebody had their hand up and was not called upon? And now you have circumvented that person and they didn't even get to talk on the board at all? So I'm okay with calling it to vote, but before it's voted on, you make sure that we have asked everyone if they have spoken.
Well, I agree with you, and that's where we come back to, is everyone should have been recognized before it got to that point, and that's where, you know...
So your point is recognizing everyone to speak?
Everyone gets to speak.
Like, I didn't see, I'm sorry, I apologize, you're not seeing, so that would help us work that out, that's why we're having this discussion.
That's all I'm asking, is we have to have a civil conversation. The public needs to know who's influencing their lawmakers or who we are, who influences us as their elected official. They need to know who's influencing us. So part of the people coming in is telling us who's influencing us, people that call us at home. But everyone should be allowed to speak and be recognized, and if they didn't get recognized, I'm sorry, because as I said, it was chaos, I believe it was, and it's not a good way for us to govern.
Go ahead, no, sorry, you weren't finished, go ahead.
It's okay. The thing to understand also, Paul, is we can be as respectful up here as we need to be, we are not gonna change the public if they're yelling or upset or frustrated, they're still gonna do it. And I'm not trying to say that I don't want it to be chaos, I don't want it to be chaos, however, you're not gonna change the public, and if they're frustrated and upset and all of that, they're still going to voice their opinion when they're not going to, when you don't want them to, when you don't, when they're not supposed to, they're still going to do that, and that is chaos in itself.
Correct.
So we may not be chaotic up here, but that happening is chaotic and that we can't change.
But we still have to try to work together as best we can to conduct the meeting as a business meeting.
And we can conduct the meeting, and we will always have people who don't agree with each other.
And that's understandable.
When we disagree, to use big words like bullying and threatening is very concerning.
Scary.
This was gonna go into a closed-door session, and I can tell you where the bullying and the threatening was gonna come. That's why I made a motion to have it, we're the minority that in that particular issue, and you were gonna go in there and lecture, we were gonna get lectured, then they're done that. The fact that there was no bullying, there was no threatening, it was a good, robust debate, nobody should have felt like they were gonna be harmed going out of the school, we have security. I mean, I can talk to law enforcement, that makes people feel better, but we, that was not what was going on. And I think it's important that we're very careful when we say those kinds of words. And what was said last meeting in open session, Paul, accusing me of threatening, I have never threatened this board, ever. Those are big words that I can't go uncontested. Those are scary words in our time, in our culture, in our times today. It is also responsible, our responsibility as a board to be careful what kind of words we use. Words like, you're threatening, words like, you're bullying, when that is not necessarily the case, but rather a robust conversation. And I think that we should be very careful with that. We can have a robust conversation, recognize each other, but if we're gonna go down the road of every time a minority or majority disagrees and then we're gonna say, well, you're threatening, no, that was not the case, or you're bullying, no, that wasn't the case. What you do is you cheapen those words, you cheapen and water down what bullying really is, you cheapen and water down what threatening really is, and that's when you do have issues and that's where you invite problems. That's just my opinion. So I think you need to, we need to be very careful, and I find it insulting personally.
About the board philosophy? Sure.
Yeah, because it was mentioned that there was threats from outside, from talking about starting a charter school. And so I just want to apologize to if you felt threatened in any way
Yep.
by me, because I didn't mean to threaten anybody. As I've brought warning before in the school district, that's why I brought up other examples, I was just bringing warning that this is concerning to many people, and you said there wasn't eight-hundred here, that's correct, there wasn't.
Eight-hundred households, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, that's what you said, and the households were here, there was many that represent both sides, I understand that, but there was many households that weren't here as well that agree with what I was saying. And that's why I was trying to bring warning to the board, a warning, not a threat, that I meet a lot of people in the community, and the direction that you're going with changing pronouns is a reason many people would want to start to leave the district. And I told you very clearly that I'm for this district, I want to see this district do well, and so I was just bringing warning, not threatening in any way whatsoever, so I apologize if you felt that way. And I still believe strongly that way, because I still have families talking to me, and so moving forward, because this is gonna be brought back up again. So in voting that direction, it makes many people, not all, you're correct, not all, but it makes many families want to either homeschool or start charter schools or even faith-based schools. And so that's why I was bringing warning to the board, and I thought I did in a very respectful way and in a very calm way and very non-threatening.
Well, thank you for that, appreciate that conversation. I do want to just mention one thing for the public that is here, so we will be having a representative here from Neola in February for the Cal and a representative from Wasby for March to, for discussion of, to present policy updates. Yes, Paul?
Thank you for recognizing me. The other thing I was gonna bring up as far as our moving forward and just being respectful with each other, the, going into a closed session is something that boards have to do time to time. I don't always know what is going to be going on in that closed session, but as a board member, I don't think I've ever asked before we've gone into closed session, what are we gonna be talking about and why do we need to do it? I've gone into closed session often and said, why are we in closed session? I don't believe this should be. And then I've And then I've been, people have explained, well, this is why, and we'll accept it. But I think that just to go into closed session to discuss something is not always, you don't always know what it's going to be. The board, the president might be doing something along with the administration, so I think that to go into closed session, this time, I think is the only time that I've ever seen a board not do it. I've seen people not want to do it or they've sat out, but I think just in general, the statement earlier about going into closed session, I think that it's a good thing to do, because oftentimes, we have to talk about individuals, and that's when it should be in closed session, because we're not trying to go after a specific, the subject is more of an individual rather than a general topic. So I think that we need to go, next time, I think, if you really have a question about going to closed session, you could probably reach out and somebody might give you a reason why we needed to do it. So that was all. I just think that whenever a closed session, it appears to be posted properly, I read it, I found a reason not to go into closed session. Once we got there and found out we shouldn't be there, we can always say, hey, let's go out in open session and deal with this.
Go ahead, Nathaniel.
And we weren't given the odd opportunity on this topic.
Well, Paul, just so you know, as you know, I did email the board, did email the board my concerns. I've been down this road before, that's what this policy that was supposed to be in this meeting, that wasn't in this meeting. When you take policies and weaponize them against another board member, and you've been down that road before, and you ask the questions, and then, as you said, well, what's great about a closed-door session is that what you say there doesn't go anywhere. I'm not going to go into a closed-door session when we're talking about a meeting that was good, in my opinion. Yes, we can always work on some things. To have things said and statements made to individual people on the board who didn't necessarily do anything wrong, to only be silenced so they can't say it to the public, because if they do, then you're going to bring that against those individuals. So I did express that in the email. You responded, others responded. And there was a suggestion to, in those set of emails, which you got, to remove this in open session, and that wasn't even from me. It's important, because the community needs to see how we work through hard issues. And we don't need to go into a closed-door session under this whole, with the policy that we found here, which, when this policy was read, I mean, that's wide open. I mean, you can say whatever you want to say under that policy, zero, one, two, three. And I think this has been good. I think this has been good for the community, and I think it's been good for the board, and I'm glad it's an open session, because it makes transparency and it keeps things the way they should be. For example, if I would have been in a closed-door session and been accused of bullying or threatening, and then I'm told I can't talk about that, that's not good. And when we have witnesses, that's the power of people and community to be involved. There's witnesses to what's going on. The community can tell then if there's a board member threatening, circumventing, disrespectful, all those things. We have a community, that's the witnesses that helped make this process really good. And I did. So just to go back and circle back, I did express my concerns, and I'm glad that we voted it to be an open session. I think this has been healthy, and I think it's good.
Any other discussion? Yes, Terry, please.
So I'm only going to say one, or a few things.
Sure.
It might be just a second, but I feel like I should interject something. So I do think, agree most portions of what everyone has said here. Everyone is correct, community, staff, board, we all have opinions. And though we're voting on policy and our opinions mean something and our personal reflections come out in probably our vote, we do have to keep in mind that it's the school, or the school, the community, staff, we're representing them all. And we should be at that, I guess we just got to reiterate, remind ourselves maybe that we're at that 30,000-foot view. I know I heard it in the strategic planning thing. Day-to-day operations and day-to-day happen at the school. We oversee it or, you know, set the policy and vote on it. I don't have any personal experience or any reflection back toward anything being threatening, but we do, but we do have to think back that words are in the eye of the beholder and how it's heard, and reflect back, well, if it was demeaning or bullying or threatening to one person, what we should think of why that was the case. Maybe we're not going to change anything, maybe we can do better, but just, I guess we just all learn from it. I don't think anyone was meaning to do anything, and obviously, things are done by getting discussion and having good discussion. If we agreed on everything, well, it'd be pretty boring for one thing, but I don't know. Discussion is good. We'll never agree, but agree to disagree, totally.
Thank you, Terry, for those words. So again, the reason why I requested that we start a discussion was that we do have coming up some things to discuss as a board and as our strategic plan, so I was just hoping that we could come back together as a consensus, try to work together to be constructive, respectful. Those were the things that I was hoping to get so that, for our meetings going forward. Any other discussion at this time?
One thing. Since I've been on the board, I've been frustrated with the fact that there's never an opportunity on an agenda to bring up just items that aren't on an agenda, that might be on our minds, that we need to discuss as a group, rather than calling you up individually and having walking corners, which we can't do. When we're all together, it's a time for a situation like Members Matters. I know, I've run a lot of meetings with Robert's Rules, and we've always had a section at the end of the meeting, what's called Members Matters, and we can bring up issues that are on our mind, we can maybe discuss them, we don't vote on them, we don't take any action, they don't have to be on an agenda, we're just floating ideas between the board. And it's a time when we're all together as a board that we can do that. I'd like to see some allowance for that to happen. I don't know why it doesn't on school board meetings, because I think it's important. We're always on, we're in the public's eye and all the camera up there. And if we can have free and easy discussions on various issues that might be on our mind that we're not going to vote on, but at least it gives the public an idea of where we stand on some things. And I think it's important that the public knows how we all stand on various issues. We can talk about them, we won't have to resolve it that night, but we can come to some discussion and some, at least people know our points of view on things. And I think that's important for transparency on this board. And that's always frustrated me since I've been on the board, that we don't have an opportunity to do that, unless I call you up and want it on the agenda, but we don't, it's not something we can discuss without having to do any action on it. See what I'm saying? I don't know.
I always ask for an item to be on the agenda, but we have to post the topics that we're going to discuss.
Yes, on public.
Not always. On Members Matters, it's a free and easy discussion where you don't, nothing has to be on the agenda. It's not, the agenda is Members Matters. And that means we can bring up stuff that's on our mind that maybe we can talk about as a board, but we don't take any action on it. We just talk about it.
I think we've been advised very differently from the School Board Association, that we have to post topics that will be addressed.
Is that information that you could get us, Dr. Aslan, or in detail? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there any other discussion at this time? There's no further discussion for that item, then we would be moving on to item four, which is convening the closed session pursuant of Wisconsin statute 19.85. Once you consider the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation debt of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Do I have a motion to move into closed session?
Second.
All right, we are now on closed session. Oh, Jesse, roll call vote, please, sorry. Skip that. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, we are turning on to 7:25. We are now in open session. During the closed session, the board took no action.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.